All right, could I have a motion that the closed meeting be closed and that the Board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So am I.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. All right, now, for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have the AFJROTC going to do a ceremony for us, and that'll be followed by a moment of silence. And during our moment of silence, please remember the school down in Florida, the latest school shooting, unfortunately, and the people who have lost loved ones and friends there.
Go, up, say, left. Forward, march, left, 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 right, right, left, 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 right, start, left, face.
Postcards?
Present, arms.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, arms. Forward, march.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Mattney, I believe you have some recognitions for us.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board Chairman Ritchie, Vice Chair Bailey, Mr. Nichols, it's my privilege to recognize at this time Parkview High School's Senior of the Month for February, and that would be the good Deja Harris. Deja, if you'd come forward. Let me share some good words about Deja. Deja is the daughter of Melissa and Randy Hyman of South Hill. She's a member of the basketball, track, and cross-country teams, and is active in the Beta, Hosa, and Key Clubs at Parkview. In her community, Deja is a member of Flat Rock Baptist Church, where she assists with their food and clothing drives, and sings in their choir. She also volunteers in feeding families at Kingdom Warriors in La Crosse, and spends her summers as a camp counselor at the Christian Summer Camp sponsored by SYDC. Amazingly, with this busy schedule, she also finds time for a part-time job at Domino's. Ms. Kidd, Deja's former English teacher and club sponsor, states that Deja possesses a bright mind and a keen spirit, and states that she looks forward to hearing of and seeing made manifest her accomplishments as she continues her journey forward. For both Beta and Key Club, Deja has participated in a variety of fundraisers, and donated her time to charities to benefit local residents who have been in automobile accidents, those who have been struck and diagnosed with cancer or other medical issues, and those who are hungry. In her spare time, she reports that she enjoys staying active, taking care of her animals, watching YouTube, and eating. Deja has earned all As, was invited to the Down Under Sports Tournament in Australia to compete in track and field, and is in the National Society of High School Scholars, which recognizes academic excellence among high-achieving students internationally. Upon graduation, Deja plans to attend North Carolina A&amp;T, majoring in Pre-Veterinary Studies, while running Division One Track and Field. Parkview High School is proud to recognize Deja Harris as its Dragon Senior of the Month.
And Ms. Harris, if you wouldn't go too far away, we'd like to, after he's done with the list, we'd like to come down and congratulate you individually. Thank you.
Our Bluestone High School Senior of the Month for February, Jenna Doll is unable to be with us this evening, so if it meets with the approval of the body, we will look forward to recognizing her along with our March recipients next month. At this time, I'd like to call on the good Gary Cypher, who has a number of cardinal distinctions that we'd like to highlight as part of our ongoing celebration of Career and Technical Education Month. Gary?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Nichols. Tonight, I had the privilege to recognize several of our CTE teachers, as well as our CTE students. As Dr. Mattney mentioned, this is CTE Month, and we would like to take this time to recognize those students. I know some of the students are not here with us tonight, so we're just going to call them, and if you, the students are here, if they'll please just come up as we go. The first set of recognitions is for a perfect score of 1,000 on the Microsoft Office Specialist Microsoft Word, industry certification, Alana Robertson, and Isabella Ranieri. All right, next, what we'd like to recognize, the students who have a perfect score of 1,000 on their Microsoft PowerPoint industry certification, Desmond Logan. And Sean Byrd. All right, next, the MCPSCTE Department would like to recognize the following students in Ms. Tracy Sykes's Parkview Middle School coding class. Once we get to the School Board recognition, you'll see a quick little coding project they did for you all in recognition of School Board Appreciation Month. It looks very simple as far as the pictures moving around the music. We'll actually show you some of the code behind it as well. And Ms. Sykes is in her very first semester of teaching coding at Parkview Middle, and we're very proud of the job that she's done with the students. So Ethan Black. And Jamie Uribe Diaz. The MCPSCTE Department would also like to recognize Ms. Amy Witten's Bluestone Middle School eighth-grade Agriculture Education Class. They designed and constructed the planners that you see in front of you for School Board Appreciation Month, and accepting on behalf of Ms. Witten's class tonight, of course, is Ms. Witten, two of her students, Sam Lindhart and Matthew Bing. MCPSCTE would also like to recognize Mr. Malcolm York Roberts and Ms. Crystal Patton's Parkview High School design class, and he was instrumental in designing these certificates for you all in recognition of School Board Appreciation. We'd also like to recognize the four students who participated in the Air Force JROTC Presentation of Colors tonight. They are Armani Bagley, Amanda Carter, Adam Pierce, and Deanna Defaball. And we'd also like to recognize the following students. If you're here, please come up. They were all instrumental in helping Mr. Russell Thomas at Bluestone High to construct and build the logo that we will unveil shortly, the new MCPS logo, which will hang behind you all on the wall. They did an excellent job with that, and we're very excited to have the new logo on display. The students who helped with this project are Molly Farrow, Herbert Terry, Austin Yancy, Colin Solberg, Chris Clay, Matthew Driggs, Anthony Newcomb, Tyler Fitz, Trevor Barnes, April Newton, Andrew Haney, Colton Boiter, Robbie Rice, Hunter Davis, and John Jones. And finally, I would like to recognize some of my CTE teachers that are here in attendance with us tonight. I could not do my job without them. They are very instrumental in the success of all of our students, and they make me look good with the CTE department. I'm very proud of them for the excellent job that they do. So when I call you up, if you'll just come up for just a moment, Mr. Johnny Williams, who teaches technology at Parkview Middle School. Ms. Corliss Thompson, who teaches business and IT at Parkview Middle School. Ms. Tanya Dunn, who teaches marketing economics at Parkview High School. Mrs. Louise Perrier, who teaches computer information systems at Parkview High School. Mrs. Crystal Patton, who teaches IT and design and advanced design at Parkview High School. Ms. Amy Witten, who teaches agriculture at Bluestone Middle. Trying to make sure I didn't miss anyone. I think I have everybody. So thank you all again. If I can have everyone, how do you all want to do the pictures? If I can have the students come up who received certificates, if you all can come up first, followed by the teachers.
Did we want to congratulate the
I think you do.
recognitions for us before they start to slip away from us?
They would all come back up.
May I make one more announcement really quickly? Sean Byrd, who received a perfect score of 1,000 on Microsoft PowerPoint, he was able to join us this evening, so just want to make sure he gets that. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. They're going to get a picture of you.
And if we can get all the students and the teachers to come up for this
For you as School Board Members, for National School Board Appreciation Week, you can tell by all of the goodies that are in front of you that you're getting well recognized by the members of each of the schools. I believe some of the elementary schools and others have some other things that they want to come up and hold on to, to show you what they've been doing, so I'll invite those principals to come up now and do that. Needless to say, the work that you do through the year is not easy. There are a lot of tough decisions that have to be made, and we've gone through significant issues in your time here, but we do appreciate the time that you're taking to do that. So, Ms. Giammario, if you will, as I call these, if you'd give them these certificates of recognition, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Edwards. Thank you, sir. Mr. Honeycutt. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Ritchie. And then I will be giving out certificates to two members who are not able to be with us tonight because of work schedules or because of sickness, as we know there's a lot that's going on there. So, you can see that several of our schools, knowing that the biggest prize is our students, they have great posters that they've put together to show their thanks to you, and these will be placed on the walls around us, and then others of the schools actually put together some items that you have before you to take home and to appreciate. One item that Mr. Cypher's mentioned earlier that I think we will all be very proud of, and if you'll pull that off, because I don't think the students are here to do that, are they, Gary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you'll come up and take this off, we had several of our students who put together a wonderful project that they did that will be placed behind you as our new symbol done in wood, and we are very, very proud of this work. So that will decorate our wall, and the back behind us is our symbol, and we're very, very thankful to the students and everyone, all of the schools, all the principals who put these together. They will be hanging for us. I also have special recognition, this is the week for School Board Clerk Appreciation, and we have one of the best School Board Clerks I've ever worked with, Ms. Giammario. I'd actually like to read this. Whereas School Board Clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas School Board Clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the School Board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas School Board Clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of her or his county or city as may be required by the School Board, and whereas School Board Clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the School Board and Superintendent, and whereas School Board Clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending board meetings, and whereas School Board Clerks join with School Board to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential, and whereas School Board Clerks provide an invaluable service for the School Board Members and Superintendents, the VSBA Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and whereas the Mecklenburg County School Board joins the VSBA in recognizing the many and varied contributions of School Board Clerks, now therefore be it resolved that at its meeting on the 19th day of February 2018, the Mecklenburg County School Board also recognizes the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in honor of Ms. Paula Giammario.
And, Mr. Nichols, one more thing I mentioned earlier, Tracy Sykes's Parkview Middle School coding class had come up with a little project for you all. Ms. Hatcher's going to show you all some code behind it. This is actually done in scratch. Again, this is the student's first semester, as well as Ms. Sykes's first semester, and we're very proud of those students, and this will actually feed into the code that they work on with our TEAL's Introduction to Computer Science program as well. So, she's just showing you some of the codes and everything behind it, and then she's going to actually play it for you all. Thank you.
A very bright future in store for those students who continue in that pathway. Great. Okay, you ready for me to go ahead with the
I believe that's the next thing the Superintendent's report.
Okay. First item, first two items on the agenda, as you will see, because it will take action item later on, is that our, both our Bluestone and Parkview High School indoor track teams have qualified to go to state competition at Roanoke College in Roanoke, Virginia, from the Bluestone High School from February 21st, 22nd, and the Parkview from February 23rd to 24th. We're very proud of them, and they will need action on your part to approve the overnight field trip request, so that's on the agenda for later on. I have, we have a report tonight. I have mentioned to the Board that the state is moving away from accountability only by SOL test scores. The state has put several factors into play, which we have been talking about through the year, and we, I had suggested to you that I thought by those factors, our schools would all be accredited under the new system. We have gotten information on the past score, past information based on that, and we have a report from Mrs., from Tracy, as well as Dr. Mattney, and I'm skipping my mind. Tracy, I'm sorry, it's just not coming to me tonight. But we're going to have a report tonight, and we look forward to it.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Mr. Nichols. Dr. Mattney and I are very pleased tonight to bring you these changes. They are hot off the press. DOE released two weeks ago, and last week in our DDOT training meeting, we're going to share with you the same slides that were shared last week. So we want to start, we're talking about state accountability reform. The state is now going to look at some new indicators. As always, in achievement, we're going to look at the English Academic Indicator, including the Passing State Assessment, Student Growth in Reading, and English Learner Progress, and we'll explain that a little bit more a little later. For Math Academic Indicator, again, the Passing State Assessment and Student Growth. For Science, the Passing State Assessment, there is no student growth concept for the science. Also, for the English, looking at the achievement gaps. What is new this year is that we are examining all reporting groups separately, where you've heard us talk about gap groups before, and some of those combine multiple groups. Now, each individual group is looked at individually, for both English and math. Also, at the high school level, you have graduation and school progress, the graduation and completion index, and the dropout rate. For student engagement, chronic absenteeism, and college and career readiness, which this will not be looked at until the year 21, 22. They're going to start collecting data on this starting next year in 2019, but this will not actually be included as part of the accreditation rating until 21, 22. They'll give us a few years to calculate and get that data. So this is a little bit about what the growth looks like. So for example, here, you have these students to take the state test. You have, the green are the students who pass automatically, the reds did not pass on the first time. So then you look at student growth. Out of those four students that did not pass, did any of them make growth? And the state has put out growth tables. It is not a set amount of you make 20 points in its growth, or you make five points in its growth. There are tables that they have divided up into different levels, and a student must go from one level this year to the next level the following year. But if they make growth, then they certainly count for us as they pass. And on the reading test, if they're an English learner, they take an additional test called the WEDA, and if they show growth on the WEDA test from the previous year, they can also count for us as they pass. If they did not pass the SOL, did not show growth on the SOL, but showed growth on the WEDA test. So we have two additional opportunities there to calculate growth for students who did not pass the SOL test. So we're very excited about this. As you can see, that took you from the original, six students passing would have been a 60% pass rate, now up to an 80% pass rate for just these 10 students. So there will be three performance levels. Level one, at or above standard, level two, near standard or improving, and level three, below standard. And those are assigned to each accreditation indicator that we just talked about. So level one, at or above standard, would always be green. A school's achievement on the specific indicator demonstrates performance at or above benchmark or adequate improvement in the indicator based on the performance benchmark. Level two means you're near standard or improvement from below standard. In yellow, a school's achievement on the specific indicator is below the performance benchmarks, but close to the range of measurement for the level one performance level. The yellow level may also indicate improvement from level three, so if a school goes from level three to level two from one year to the next. A school quality indicator within the yellow range, which does not improve to the green range at the end of four years, shall be re-designated as red at the end of the four-year period. So you have four years as yellow before you would be designated as red. And then, of course, level three is below standard, a school's achievement is well below the performance standards. So this is what it looks like for each of those accreditation indicators that we talked about. For English, we're still looking at a 75% or higher would be level one, between 66 and 74 would be level two, and anything below 60, 65 or lower would be red. For combined rate for math, 70% for green, between 66 and 69 in the yellow, and 65 and lower is the red. And the pass rate for science, again, is the same as the math at 70%. When you look at your achievement gaps, they do expect the same pass rate for those achievement gaps as they do for the all-student category, so it's 75% in English for each individual gap group or each individual subgroup, between 66 and 74 for yellow, and 65 or lower for red, and that's for both reading. And the math, the only difference is 70 or higher for green. For the graduation completion index, 88 or higher for level one, between 81, 87 for yellow, and 80 or lower for level three. Dropout rate, 6% or lower for green, between seven and eight for yellow, 9% or higher for red. Chronic absenteeism, 15% or lower is green, between 16 and 24% is yellow, 25% or higher is red. And then again, the college, career, and civic readiness, which will be in 21, 22, 85% or higher is green, between 71 and 84, yellow, and 70% or lower is red. So all of those things then get put together into one lump sum, and we will have three school accreditation designations for next year. If everything for a school is either green or yellow, they will be considered accredited. So you can be level one or level two in all of those areas we just talked about, and you would be considered accredited. Accredited with conditions is if you have any school quality indicator in the level three range. And then accreditation denied, the Virginia Board of Education shall deny accreditation for any school that continues to demonstrate level three performance in any school quality indicator due to a failure to adopt and implement the school division or school corrective action plan with fidelity. We don't anticipate that any school should fall into this category next year. They indicated last week that this is being a transition year into the new, this new format, that they're going to give every school division time to implement those plans, so there shouldn't be any schools necessarily that fall in that accreditation denied category. You could have some, though, that are accredited with conditions. All of this is going into place for next year, but our schools also have the option to still go under the old accreditation system, depending on which one makes you look more favorable. So for one year only, we have the option to either continue to look at things the way we have this year, or to apply this formula to our scores for next year. And so at this time, Dr. Mattney's just going to show you some examples, and then show you our school data. our school data.
Thank you, Tracy. The slides forthcoming seek to provide some illustrative examples of how fictional schools with certain sets of criteria would fare under the new standards of accreditation, which go into full effect for the 2018, 2019 academic year. First before you is West Elementary, which based on level one and level two performances in each area, where it met or is approaching benchmarks with none in the level three category, would earn full accreditation. This campus would be duty-bound to address level two areas approaching benchmarks in its multi-year school improvement plan, and that would be both, as you see in the yellow areas, addressing achievement gaps among the seven subgroup reporting categories in English reading and writing, as well as in the area of attendance. North High School would also be accredited with conditions for having all areas in level one or level two noted in green or yellow, as noted earlier, with one or more area within level three designated in red. It would be incumbent upon North High School to develop a corrective action plan to enhance and improve performance on this indicator, namely achievement gaps in English, reading and writing, where performances were well below established benchmarks. The Department of Education recently took last year's 2016, 2017 data and assessed it under these new parameters. Here in Mecklenburg County, and I believe this will be edifying to all, including our dedicated educators, as all schools would be accredited, including Chase City Elementary, where a level one at or above the established standard was achieved in each indicator above, all green as you see. All green at or above standard in each reporting area would earn Clarksville Elementary School full accreditation. Across Elementary School at or above standards in each of the six school quality indicator areas would be fully accredited. South Hill Elementary, too, would be accredited with all school quality indicators at or above standard marked in green or near standard with the designation in yellow, achievement gap, English. Among our middle schools, Bluestone Middle School would be fully accredited with all indicators at, above, or near standard. So, too, would Parkview Middle School with all areas in green or yellow signifying a performance at, above, or approaching the standard, again, earning it full accreditation. Among our high schools, Bluestone High School would be accredited as well with conditions, based on all areas at or above or near standards, with only one area at level three, that being attendance. And we suspect that this indicator, which many suggested and implored the state board not to adopt as a measure of student engagement, inasmuch as there is ongoing debate, as you know, in the research about just how much volitional control the school has on the attendance of a child, we suspect that this will be a challenging category for high schools across the Commonwealth, all 320. Parkview High School, too, would be accredited with conditions, once again, meeting or approaching all academic benchmarks, and having only one area attendance, chronic absenteeism within level three. At this time, as Rogers and I stand ready to try and attempt to answer any questions that you may have on these new accreditation standards.
And just to clarify, these are not in effect for this year? This was just to give us a picture. Our old accreditation rating still stands for this year. This was just to give you a picture of what it would have looked like had this new format been applied to last year's data. Any questions?
I have just a quick question. I know you mentioned that it would be hard to do anything about attendance, or do, or do other schools have anything planned? I mean, does anybody have any ideas how we can do anything about that? That seems like that would be very difficult. You may remember that when we started talking about preparing for the new graduation expectations of students, that are eighth graders and below coming in, and with these accountability standards, and our goal with our new schools focusing on the six career centers, that we mentioned there was going to be a stronger focus on the soft skills and how we build that in, and that attendance and tardiness are two areas that business and industry are particularly concerned about. And so, as we would have students on the chart that I had showed you before, we had lower high school and upper high school with 11th and 12th grade, giving students the opportunities for earning their industry standard credentials, but also talking about them being able to go and do apprenticeships or doing job shadowing opportunities. And my recommendation as we move forward, and as I'm going to be talking with more business and industry, instead of having a stick to try to punish students about absenteeism things, that they will know as a part of their career trajectory and their career plans, if they want the opportunity to do job shadowing activities or apprenticeships, which can be incredibly important for them as they move on, they have to have attendance and discipline issues in a range that would be acceptable by business and industry, and for our schools, acceptable here. And that gives them a carrot to say, it's important, I understand why it's important for us to be in attendance, because that's what's expected if I go to a job.
And will that show up anywhere, if they meet that standard?
It will show up through the use of some of the digital badges and things of that nature that we credential them with, because we will be giving those credentials to the business and industry that, then offers them the opportunity to be able to move on.
The business industry will be able to see how dependable...
Exactly.
Okay, that's great.
That's, that's the whole issue behind that, is to, to put them in a position that they really see, it's not just, you're not just here to get a high school diploma. Nothing before has kept a child from getting a high school diploma in this area, and now we wanna be able to say, this is important because it's preparing you for your future.
I have a quick question.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Go ahead. What, the absenteeism, what, what percentage is that based off of, from last year?
It would be based, the definition is a pretty strident one. It's absences for any reason, and it's defined chronically absent as missing 10% or more of a given school year. So any child who misses 180-day school year, misses 18 days or more, is defined as chronically absent. Again, a very strident definition, for any reason. Mononucleosis, you're chronically absent. Extended illness, you're, you're chronically absent. The standard there is if you have 15% of your student population or less, being defined as chronically absent, meaning they're missing 10% or more of the school year for any reason, that would be the criterion one would need to meet to achieve level one. 16 to 24%, level two, you're approaching the benchmark, and again, if, if 25% or better of your student population is absent more than 10% of the school year for any reason, you are deemed to be level three by the state, well below the established benchmark.
And I guess that was my question, whether we're illness or something that, you know, well, they, are they gonna allow for something like that?
I would certainly think that they are going to have to adopt some type of measure which would distinguish between someone who is very legitimately absent...
Correct, correct.
...as opposed to someone who is, again, a bit more wanton perhaps in their efforts to attend school.
Okay.
I think you answered my question and answering his, but mine's were going to be, was going to be, if a child is suspended, is that going to be counted as one of the absent days?
It's our understanding that yes, that would count as an absence.
So then that kind of pushes us to go to some other form of alternative education, wherein that the child could still be counted present, but not in the class with the other students?
Yes, sir.
And, and of course, you recognize, as we all do, that legislature is looking at bills again, and is restricting our ability to be able to suspend, which is why we feel the need for stronger alternative education opportunities at both the elementary and secondary level.
That is a big thing, not suspending kids, as we have done in the past, you know.
And, and in fairness to the legislators, it's an economic development issue, just as we've heard from business and industry. I can't find persons who, who know how to behave to keep a job, or who know how to stay, come to work on time and regularly. And, and if they, the thinking of the General Assembly is, we're not teaching them those skills if we're sending them home to continue to do what they wanna do. So it could be looked at as the schools are getting punished for what is happening or not happening.
But on the other hand, and I have to say this, I hope I'm not out of hand, out of line here, but we also have to do something to get those students who are disruptive out of the classroom so that teachers can teach.
Right. Exactly. That's why we have to spend considerable time and effort on building the right alternative education program.
Go ahead.
How, how do tardies work into the absenteeism rate?
As far as I know, at this time, they do not. Currently, we do not count tardies, they don't roll over into an absence, so for the state purposes, they should not also count.
It's one of the items that is not currently in this, but it's being considered for future. They can add to this list in the future other areas, and that's one that they're also looking at, is the tardiness rate.
One thing that Tracy and I did not have opportunity to ask last Thursday while in Glen Allen, but again, if it meets with the approval of the body, we'd like to inquire about, is just what is the distribution among 320 high schools, level one, level two, level three, last year's data, based on the new standard? I imagine it would be rather daunting to, to look at that data.
And when you look at the college, career, and civic readiness index, that's directly going back to profile of a graduate. They're looking to see how the school divisions are gonna come up with our plans for working and identifying that students are meeting those expectations, and then they will come up with the state's follow-up to push schools that are not necessarily putting plans together. So there, again, you will see probably more index indicators that can be added to make sure that those options are there.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before I go on, I'd like to ask Ms. Bailey if she'd give us an update from the NSBA Advocacy Institute.
So I don't get to come down here to the podium much anymore either, since I'm sitting up there, but I wanted to give you an update about my trip to Washington last week and the things that went on there. And the dates were from February 4th to 6th. We started on Sunday afternoon and met with various speakers on Sunday. Monday, we had visits with our senators. That's a picture of some of the Virginia delegation in, on the north side of the Capitol Building. There were about 25 members of the Virginia delegation there. It was very cold and windy this day, so half of them were in shelter. They didn't wanna get out in the wind. And so we were able to secure meetings with Senators Kane and Senators Warner on Monday afternoon, about 30 minutes apart, and so we all went over together and, and met with them. This is a picture of our 5th District delegation. As you know, the 5th District is very large, from Mecklenburg, Brunswick, all the way up past Albemarle County, Charlottesville, it's a very, it is the largest district in the state, and five of us from the 5th District visited with Paul Hartman, who is Delegate Garrett's, excuse me, Representative Garrett's education specialist. So John, with the fir-, from left to right, the first guy there is from Albemarle County, and next to him is Mr. Purrier, he's from Brunswick County. There was another Purrier, not related, she was from Charlottesville City. The guy next to Ms. Purrier is from Albemarle County, and myself. And it was, really was a good cross-section of the kinds of people that Representative Garrett represents, city, urban, county, kind of a bedroom community of Charlottesville, and then rural south side Virginia. And even though we're all very different, and we have different needs, we had a lot in common as well, so I think that we were able to, to get that across. I need, I need Desmond here, 'cause I don't think I would have gotten 1,000 on this PowerPoint. It's, it's not working out. But anyway, the four areas that we concentrated on for the agenda was the IDEA reauthorization, Carl Perkins, the Higher Education Act, which is really a, a college kind of act, but it does affect us on the K-12 foundation, and then rebuilding America's schools. This is a picture of us standing outside of Representative Garrett's office, and the IDEA Act needs to be reauthorized, it needs to be looked at again. When it was first passed in 1975, we know that Congress said that they were gonna fund, fund the special ed portion of education at 40%, and they have yet to do that since 1975. Right now, Mecklenburg County is only receiving about 17 and a half percent of our special ed funding, when you look at per pupil basis and what it costs to, to educate that subsection of our, our population. And Congress knows that they're not doing that, and, yeah. So we reminded them of that, and I was asked to tell some personal stories about what's going on here in Mecklenburg, and how this lack of funding affects us. One of the things that I pointed to was our lack of being able to find qualified special education teachers in a very rural area. And the second bullet point there kind of speaks to that. I read it in an article in Education Week that, you know, one of the reasons that special ed teachers say that they are getting out of special education is because they spend two-thirds of their day filling out paperwork, rather than dealing with students, which is what they, that's their love of teaching, is, is dealing with students. And so part of this IDEA reauthorization would be to reduce some of the paperwork that is, is now necessary. One of the other things I spoke to was the fact that we are constantly advertising for the specialists that we need to provide the care of physical therapy, occupational therapy, the fact that we have to source those things out, which ends up kind of being more expensive to do that. And in rural areas such as ours, it really does put an extra financial burden on us to deliver these kinds of services. Also, since Congress has recognized that they're not holding up to their 40% of the deal, part of this reauthorization legislation would include a 10-year path to get there. So ideally, that over the next 10 years, we would see that percentage from Mecklenburg of 17 and a half percent start to creep up, hopefully to the 40% level. The other thing I spoke to was the situations where we have catastrophic cases of, of students that need to be placed outside of our school district, and what that, what kind of burden that, that puts on us. And one of the goals of this new IDEA legislation would be able to create high-cost pools for states to be, to be able to reimburse the locality when they have those very high expenses that they have to, to deal with. This is a picture of us in with Senator Kane. We also met his education specialist, Karisma Merchant, and she did express some interest in coming down to Mecklenburg and visiting with us here, and I, I think we would be honored to have them if they chose to do that. The next thing that we talked about was the, of course, Carl Perkins reoff, and right now, the House of Representatives has voted to reauthorize Carl Perkins, and the Senate has not, and it's not even on the docket. They don't anticipate it coming up in the next few months even. And one of the reasons that they say that they're not is because they don't have the personnel in the Education Department to be able to work out the, the grants, and to read over the grants, and, and to do those things. So we highly recommend it, that they get on that, especially in light of the changes that the state of Virginia's made with the profile of a graduate, and the fact that we need Carl Perkins money for consumables and for equipment that we need to buy to help our students meet their goals, to be credentialed or to be ready for the needs of the workforce. Also, we talked about the apprenticeships that the state of Virginia is highly encouraging, and the fact that Carl Perkins money would help us to, to prepare our students better for those opportunities, and also, again, just a, just a manpower shortage of qualified CTE teachers, and the, the problems that we have in rural areas of finding those things. This is a picture of me, actually, talking with Senator Kane. He's really focused in on me there. I, I hope he's, and of course, I'm using my hands, I'm not using them tonight, but I was sharing my stories with him about our, our special ed students, and our inability to be able to get the people that we need to help them. The next... The next slide here is a picture of us with Lauren Michael, who was Senator Warner's Education Specialist, and we talked with her also about the Higher Ed Act, and right now, the House of Representatives has approved their version of the Higher Ed reauthorization, which is excluding Title II funds, and these are not the same Title II funds that we use here for our students, but it's Title II funds on the collegiate level. And those Title II funds do help with recruiting students into the teaching field and also supporting principals and their training at the college level, and those monies have been removed from the Higher Ed Act. Also, the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program, which was a program that reimbursed teachers if they went to work in a critically short area, those monies have been removed from the House version of the Higher Ed Act reauthorization. When we spoke with the senators, of course, they wanted to put that money back in. If you've had a chance to look at the President's proposed budget, those Title II funds have also been removed. So, not that anybody ever looks at a presidential budget, but we're hoping that those monies would be put back in, because we do use those tools to recruit teachers to the profession. One of the other things that we talked about was creating new kinds of bond programs to help us in our building of new schools. Right now, if you have bonds out there and the interest rates are high, you are not allowed to refinance to get a lower interest rate, if that's possible, so they were asking that any legislation that they would write would include advanced refund bonding. Also, prioritize grants for underserved areas, in rural areas that need new buildings. I can't really think of anybody that really fits that description right now, except for us. So we were hoping that they could, I also reminded them, in a school division our size, we don't have people sitting in central office, sitting around waiting to write grants all day. All of our boots are on the ground, and especially in Virginia, we don't even have any centers to help with grant writing. So if you have to write a grant to get it, we're at a disadvantage right off the bat. So we encourage them to do that. And also, if you were going to be using this money, we encourage them not to put strings attached to it, that the school has to be a green school, or it has to be built to a certain specification, because again, that puts rural school divisions at a disadvantage. And also, we did touch on the broadband aspect of things for rural areas, similar to what was done in the '30s when we created the rural electric co-ops, if they would think about doing the same types of things for broadband in rural areas, so that we can grow, the same way that rural electric co-ops helped us grow earlier in the previous century. So I want to say that I really didn't know what this was going to entail. I didn't really go up there with any real expectations, except of forging relationships and just relaying the, what really happens when this legislation is passed, how it affects us on the local level. And I think it's important for us to be able to tell that story to those people in Washington. The thing that I came away with was what a tremendous job that they have to do, and if we're not willing to take the time to give them feedback on what they're doing and how it affects us, we're really not going to be part of the solution. We're going to be part of the problem. So I want to especially thank Mr. Nichols, Ms. Pfeffer, Dr. Majette, Ms. Rogers, Ms. Height, Paula, for helping me get prepared to go with the right questions and with the right information to give feedback. I also want to thank the board for approving me to go. I think it was worthwhile. I plan on visiting Representative Garrett's office in Danville when he's there. Also plan to make a trip to Richmond to visit with Lauren and with Karisma when they are there. I invite any of you to go with me, to, again, relay to them what it is that they're doing and how it affects us. Does it help us or does it hurt us? And what can they do to help us? I think that's part of our responsibility as elected officials, to communicate with them. They are elected as well, and that is our job to advocate for our county. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Maybe Mr. Cypher's can answer this. What kind of monies did Carl Perkins grant? What did we receive from them this year in total, if you remind myself and the board?
For this year, we did receive a cut. We received $88,000. Majority of that money does go to the purchase of equipment. We do have some money that goes towards assistance with the CTE Completers Survey, and then also some cost as far as students attending conferences and things like that. And again, we can only buy equipment with that, we can't buy any type of materials or supplies.
So again, losing that would be detrimental to this county.
Yes, sir.
And to the students.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think you're going in a direction that I will comment on. There's so much demand for economic development and an understanding that it pushes down into the K-12 level, as it never has before. And of course, you've heard me speak much like Mrs. Bailey has, but talking about the state level and what we're looking at from the state level and their concern about these things. And we don't have a final budget this year, but rural schools are getting the short end of the stick.
Suffering.
We're suffering. We're getting cut and cut with expectations that are higher and higher. And I think that, of course, we're going to be asking more from the county as well, but I do feel for the county administrators, because they get stuck with the need to have economic development, and they're getting so little support from any other areas, when we have a plan that can work if we get the funding to be able to do it. So, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Speaking of workforce readiness, I know the board, and I don't want to have any situations where I present information that needs to be voted on at the same time, but we, and this is not anything other than an award that the School Board Association has now come up with, and we've gotten the information on, but we have to be able to get this worked out very quickly. There is a School Board Association Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award, and this is a program that the, the V.S.B.A. has worked with the state particularly, and trying to encourage more school divisions to embrace the profile of a graduate and to create plans that would be recognized for green in the area of the college readiness, career readiness, and things of that nature. And Mr. Cypher's is working very hard on putting together our application for this award, but when the application came out, it does require that we have the board approval to submit for it, and so I'm asking that you give us that permission to be able to do that tonight. Full disclosure, the V.S.B.A. has asked me to be the co-chair of that committee. I will not be a part of selecting the award winners. Okay? That's being left up to experts outside of the V.S.B.A., but we will be putting in an application and hopefully, and be competing against some pretty tough competition. Henry County and others that are in our division area have been working on this a little longer than we have, so I would like to have your support for that. And then I have placed on each of your, at each of your spaces, some new policy, a new policy page that came out in January, that's looking at some of the policy expectations. In this particular case, the ones that are listed here at the bottom, BDD, H, and you know how we go through and find where these policies come up, these are all areas that there, we don't have any regulations for in our policy manual. And so we're going to be working on some recommendations in the next month, and we'd like for you to take some careful consideration of these areas and engage us in the conversation about what you would look for, as well as what we will be doing. These are very important regulations, and so are policy issues that we need to be able to go by. We've had some conversations about some of these, some of these are brand-new, and so I just wanted to bring this to your attention, so that as you think about these and look at what types of things we're doing, we can actually move them to regulations for another month. But this is going to be some very important areas. You'll notice one of them on here is student absences, excuses, and dismissal. So you can see why that's becoming, among the others, so much of an issue for us to be able to deal with. Student transcripts is one that we know we'll be having to work on such issues as when students take the AP or dual enrollment classes, how that transfers, how we have ways using digital badges or other things to be able to recognize what students do outside of the classroom, which ones of those items are going to be there, how they are digitally transferred from one place to another, what students have access to. So we need to work on many of these areas. Any questions about that? Okay, there are several items beyond that that I just want to bring to your attention. In the upcoming couple of months, as we are now at a place where the RFP for the architect will be coming back to us for a decision by the board at the next board meeting, and we will be looking to engage you all in conversation about that, but we've got a pretty short turnaround in being able to get some support from the community and the Board of Supervisors, and so I am beginning to meet with members of the community, individual businesses. My goal is to have a partnership, a significant partnership for each of the career centers, and I'm going to the, each of the three chambers of commerce to have a conversation with those business leaders, to talk about what this looks like. My goal there is to have those partnerships, so that they understand that we are looking to help develop the soft skills and have them directly communicate with us for each of the career centers, what those soft skills look like, so that we can begin putting them in place. I'd like to be able to have them make commitments to us, so that we can have the career camps for the middle school students available, and with them recognizing those opportunities, want them to tell us what they need students to do for the credentials, and how they support us in working with that. And I've already had some conversations with several of them. We're getting very good support, but I want to solidify some of that as we move along. Those meetings in Chase City and in Clarksville will be on March the 15th, and then in South Hill Chamber on April the 2nd, and then individual businesses will be beyond that, and I would welcome you to join me for any of those as we go through and have them. I also want to just mention, as far as the budget is concerned, you know, we know that there's going to be some considerable expense to the new schools as we begin to put them together, but we can't wait until then to begin preparing for the eighth graders that will be working with new expectations. And so I've already spoken with the Finance Committee, and I'll be speaking with you as individuals, about the way I will be selling the budget for next year, because we do need to begin doing that immediately. And it's going to be some focus on personnel that are needed in CTE areas and alternative education opportunities for our elementary schools, and perhaps broadening what we have at the secondary level, to be able to take care of some of these things. So that process comes up, and then at our March meeting, I will be presenting the full budget to you. At that time, we hope to have a budget approved by the state. We haven't gotten to that part yet, and we know that there's some significant disagreement between the Senate and the House of Delegates on what they're looking for. One version has a 2% increase for teachers starting soon, the other one has an increase, but not starting for another year or so. That will play into our budget, because when they talk about a 2% increase, they're talking about those staff members that are covered by the standards of quality, and we have a lot of student, a lot of our faculty that are not covered by the standards of quality. So that brings, you know, considerable expense back to the county as well, that we have to put into our budget, and we explain those types of things. We know that they're going, well, we're 90% certain they're going to pass a bill, as we were just talking about, related to limiting our opportunities for using suspension or expulsion with students, and that's been promised to carry some funding for alternative ed, but many times, we get unfunded mandates. So we need to know at that point before I bring a budget to you or you pass one to take to the Board of Supervisors. So our goal right now is that I will bring what we have to you at the March 19th board meeting. We will have a public hearing the following Monday night, which is the 26th of March, and then I will be asking the board for a special meeting to just pass the board, to pass the budget after the, we have the public hearing on that Wednesday night, March the 28th, if you put that on your calendars. So, and then we'll give it to the Board of Supervisors and work with them beyond that. Speaking of meeting with the Board of Supervisors, I have not heard from them a set meeting for the Joint Education Committee. I think we are going to have some report on some of that tonight with, from Mr. Edwards. But in light of the fact that when we have the new school in place, we will be turning the old buildings over to the county, and in light of the fact that we have some significant issues related still to keeping those buildings going for the length of time until we have new buildings, and we don't want to spend too much money on keeping things going, and yet we have to have them in place, and they may want to use them for other things. I have requested a meeting with the Joint Education Committee to be set, so that we can begin having a discussion about how much money the Board of Supervisors wants to put into keeping those old buildings maintained for whatever use they might have. And I've sent that request to Mr. Carter, and I anticipate that we will be hearing some dates for that, so I'd like you to be aware of that as well. I do want to bring to your attention that we have had an excellent first pilot movement with the Feed More program. Last week, they chose Chase City Elementary School for the pilot, and what I, I was unable to attend because of other meetings, but I know that several of our central office staff was able to be there, Ms. Bailey, I believe, was able to be there for that, and everything I've heard was that they had twice the number of participants that they expected, and that it went very well, and that Ms. Bailey's going to find, have to find more reading books to go along with the Feed More as it's distributed. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, but it looks like it got off to a stellar start, and we're very pleased with that. And then the last thing I want to mention, as we talk about the need for our teachers, is that Ms. Alga has begun attending our recruitment fairs at various universities. She was at University of Virginia last Friday, and will be continuing to work toward those, and we are looking with great hope and anticipation in being able to recruit some good persons to be able to come back and work with us in the upcoming years with their teacher and other needs that we have for our system. So the best of our hopes with Ms. Alga, she goes out for those, for those fairs. I'm sorry? I don't know, Mr., yes, Fred, you want to say anything else to say about the Feed More program?
I just want to briefly talk about the program. Feed More had anticipated, you know, 40 families that would be served on that night, that was about their average, and we had 85 families that come out. Again, we were able to tap in some other things, like Mrs. Bailey came and gave away books, and had students... books and had students read. We had the Virginia Cooperative Extension people there that actually prepared a recipe with some of the food that they were able to give away. It was a very good turnout. We were busy from the town, we opened it up until the time that we left. I also want to give a shout out to my staff because the volunteers for that first event were all Chase City staff members. We actually had to turn away volunteers because we had over 20 staff members that volunteered to man the school market for that first one. And we are slated to have three more this school year.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, that's my superintendent's comments tonight.
All right, I think we'll move on to our committee reports. The Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee.
The, I think it's been reported the last time the Joint Education Committee met, things are moving forward with the new school. Surveys are being done on properties. Virginia Department of Transportation is looking at the entrances and exits to more than one site, actually, and all these things are very important. It just takes a lot of time and a lot of due diligence to find, to spend $100 million of taxpayer money. It, it can't be done. I know everybody wants it, wants it done really fast, but it has to be done the right way. This project is a 60-year-plus project, and we don't want to make any mistakes if possible. It's gotta be done right. Meanwhile, our schools that we have now, I know all you are suffering because of minor things, but we've got a, we've got a maintenance department. Mr. Dalton is working diligently to keep things going and try to hold them because we don't want to spend new money for our new school on the older schools knowing that we're gonna abandon them, so. And I think, did you have something tonight?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dalton? Okay, good. He's got a, I think he's got a report on some of the capital improvement money and what he's gonna do with it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, Board members. Just to tag on to what Mr. Edwards says, we are, as far as the secondary level schools go, we, we do try to work very diligently to keep the heat up, to keep the leaks out. It's just unfortunately, it's some very old buildings there, and at times a little overwhelming. And we don't, we want to be very courteous of the monies that we spend. And on the other hand, we do have four elementary schools that we're trying to make improvements on, on an annual basis. And on February the 5th, 2018, I met with Mr. Palmer, Mr. Edwards, and Mr. Nichols, and we kinda, we got together a project list for 2018, and have, have no figures to present with, with these tonight. In between now and the March's meeting, we're, we plan to hold another meeting, that I will have quotes for all these, and we will decide what we're gonna move forward with, what we can afford to move forward with. But for right now, the projects that we have proposed is painting the hall and restrooms at the elementary schools. We will, I would like to completely finish covering the asbestos floors at Chase City, Clarksville, and La Crosse in the, in the luxury vinyl tile that we started with last year. We plan to install an awning in between the new addition and the cafeteria at Chase City Elementary School, as used on a daily basis, a sidewalk that we poured last year, and we'd like to give the kids some kind of way to get in and out of the cafeteria in inclement weather. Train control updates, I'll, I'll touch base with you more on that when I get more pricing, but basically, the control scheme at South Hill is out of date, and we do need to update it to stay current with our controls at South Hill, and it also merges with the new control schemes that we have going through the Energy Performance Project at Clarksville, La Crosse, and Chase City. Something that we just added is replacing the older window shades at the older elementary schools. I believe y'all all seen the vinyl pull-down ones, most of them don't work, some of them are stained, they're an eyesore, but for more than, for many reasons, it's important to have those, and security being one of the main reasons. So we're looking at replacing those in the Chase City, Clarksville, and La Crosse schools also. Installing epoxy flooring in the older restrooms of the old elementary schools. We're looking to replace one of our maintenance trucks that almost, has almost 300,000 miles on that. Also looking at some blacktop replacement at Clarksville Playground. Some of the projects that we've already started moving forward with are upgrading the security system at Chase City Elementary School, parking lot light repair at South Hill Elementary School, that seems to be an ongoing project, so we hope to nip that in the bud and try to figure out what's the, what exactly is going on down there. And during Easter break, we have several dead trees at Parkview Middle School and here at the central office that will be removed. Any questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you. I, I just want to say, Ryan, you're, you're a godsend to this school division since you've been here. I think everybody here agrees that we've come a long way since you came on board to find things and to update them and keep us going.
Well, I appreciate it, but I mean, I feel, I have a good crew of people that I work with in the central office every day, and a great maintenance staff, and I'm appreciative of all of that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
The Finance Committee, Ms. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met today at 5:00, and there are a couple of things that we have made, we have recommendations for tonight. One of those is Ms. Puffer needs a supplemental appropriation for the Technology Department. We did receive Link grant monies, which we have spent, and the Link monies are here, and so she is asking us to approve that, and the committee would certainly recommend that we do that. Also, Mr. Nichols gave us the same budget update that he gave to you, that he does have a handout, if you'd like a copy of that before you leave tonight. He has copies of those, and he'd be happy to go over that with you. Most of the increase is in human resources, and I can't think of a better place to put additional monies. Again, write down that our budget presentation will be at our next general meeting, March 19th, public hearing scheduled for March 26th, and then a special call meeting on March 28th. And we also did review the bills for this month, and the committee did approve to pay the bills as they were presented. And that's all that we have for Finance.
Okay, the Gifted, Talented, Special Ed, Health, and Family Committee?
The Gifted, Talented Committee met, Ms. Rogers tells me, I was not there, but she did send me the minutes, and they have come up with a matrix that will identify children who are the gifted talents.
Provision to the month.
And for us to look at what I was like, and put that into training. Also, government schools, there are banks that are coming out of activities that we take place, and I'll get them to use as a.
Okay. And I was actually at the gifted committee, and I was interested to see how much work they go through to select, to accurately select these children to the committee. They're very careful about the job they do, and we have a lot of volunteers on that committee, and I appreciate the work that they're willing to do for our gifted students. How about the CTE? Mr. Cypher's again? You're a busy man tonight.
Good evening again, Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Nichols, School Board members. We are in our final preparations for our federal audit. The DOE is scheduled to visit next week. They'll be with us Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and at the end of the day, Wednesday, they will give us a preliminary report of their findings. And then after then, they'll give us an official report where we'll start to make any type of corrected action, corrective action plans, excuse me. Also, the question was asked last month during the board meeting about the automotive hours and how we were planning to work on fixing those, those challenges with the automotive hours. And Mr. Nichols, Mr. Hackney, Dr. Carter, Ms. Swain, Ms. Height, Ms. Hendrick, and myself met last month shortly after then, and I will be able to do a full presentation hopefully to you all next month as far as a final plan. We have looked at several options. We will correct that, the issue with hours with this new student starting in Automotive 1 next year, and then we have a plan in place to correct those hours for the students that are currently in Automotive 1 that will progress to Automotive 2, and those students that are currently in Automotive 2 if they choose to progress to Automotive 3. And then, like I said, with the new students coming in, that will not be an issue anymore after next year, after this year. Thank you.
All right, Athletic Committee?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I am very pleased that Parkview High School had this young lady, has already been mentioned tonight, but I think it's only fair to mention it again in our athletic report. Deja Harris, that's going to Australia to represent the, actually, the state of Virginia. And I think that is outstanding, and that is something that the school should be commended for as well as the student and her parents. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is our basketball teams, I have been following them, and they have been doing or are doing extremely well. They both are playing tonight. As far as their win-loss record, it is outstanding. I know the coach at Parkview was nominated, or not nominated, actually received Coach of the Year, and so that's a plus for Parkview and the coaching staff down there, so I commend you folks. The only other thing is that the wrestling team, I think, is still, no, they are at the state level, so I commend them as well, and I think that is at both schools if I'm not mistaken. And that is it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The Instruction Committee has no report tonight, but hopefully we'll be meeting in the next month or two as we're putting this budget together. Now is the portion of our meeting for public input. Do we have anybody to speak tonight?
Yes, I do. At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the board and administration. Public comments at board meetings are just one of many avenues for communication, and the board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is invited to sign up to speak. The clerk of the school board will write down your name, contact information, and the topic that you wish to speak about. The public is allowed up to six minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation, it will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to beginning your comment, please state your name to the board.
My name is Leslie Wood. I have two children in our school system, and I would like to thank all of you for your time and your dedication to the school board and for what you do. In light of the events on Friday at Bluestone High School, I have some concerns for my current high school student as well as my future high school student with our security that's there. And I realize we're in the process of making a new building. However, I feel the need to employ you to please consider upgrading the security there. I feel very confident in the security at the elementary school. I don't feel quite so confident that the same, that the same security is in place at the high school. Just through speaking with my daughter, there are some doors that maybe don't lock well that can be entered upon, and I, I realize that at the high school level, you can't stop children from popping the door and letting someone in if they know them, that's going to happen. But I feel like we need to maybe reexamine the security level at the high school and just make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our children. And can we afford really not to, not to do something stronger than what we're doing? And I asked this morning at the high school if, if the child in question from the incident on Friday would be allowed back at the school, and no one could seem to answer that question for me. So do we know what the policy is on that?
At this point, it's right in the hands of the police department, and we're not able to do anything else until we get final information from the police department and what their, what's gonna happen through the court system. Once we hear that information, then we'll come back and we will be making determinations. But with that level of, of issue, it will be, it will be taken to the full extent of the law.
And given that it can't be proved, or maybe there's, you know, to the point that they can't do anything about it, we will allow him to come back to school with our children?
I doubt very seriously, but I don't know all of the ins and outs about what's gonna come of that.
Okay. But we'll look into that.
Oh, absolutely.
That's all I need to know. That's everybody.
That's everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right, we're to our action portion of our meeting. Minutes from the regular meeting held January 16th, 2018. May I have a motion that the school board approves the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on January 16th, 2018?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
The minutes for the special meeting held January 29th, 2018. May I have a motion that the school board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on January 29th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Stain.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. On the paying of the bills, do I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee that the school board approves the payment of the bills?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to bring up the object team that billed for $1,041, which is hotel for Mrs. Bailey to watch. I feel like we spent in a total of $500, which she herself has said at the very end of her presentation, she could have contacted the same people by calling their office and making appointment, and it wouldn't cost as much. And I feel like that, if it would've been a lot better doing it that way, paying doesn't have money to go to Washington to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, please.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remind the public of what Mrs. Bailey stood up and, and her presentation gave. The fact that there's a possibility that things such as a Carl Perkins grant, that $88,000, or any other supplemental monies that come to rural counties in southern, especially in southern Virginia, to have an advocate off of this board to go and fight for Mecklenburg County, I think is a true testament to her loyalty to serve on this board. It might be that we in the future, when we lose those monies, might need to take our salaries that we receive from the Board of Supervisors to serve on this board to fill in some of the gaps in attending some of these meetings. Again, I commend her for what she did and appreciate what she did for rural southern Virginia and for Mecklenburg County public schools.
Okay, thank you. Any more? So I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
No.
Mr. Ritchie?
On the personnel agenda, may I have a, a motion that the school board approves the personnel recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Palmer, seconded by Ms. Garner. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
On the overnight travel for the Bluestone High School indoor track team? On the overnight travel for the Bluestone High School indoor track team?
So moved.
Okay, wait, wait. Oh, I haven't refreshed. I might use different than you. All right. Okay, may I have, this is the supplemental appropriations for technology?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee is recommending that we approve that additional appropriation.
All right, we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
And now on to the Bluestone High School indoor track overnight field trip. May I have a motion that the school board approves?
So moved, sir.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
And may I have a motion that the school board approves the Parkview High School indoor track overnight field trip to state competition?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Staying.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
And about the V S B A academic, excuse me, Excellence of Workforce Readiness Award, may I have a motion that the school board approves the participation of the division in the V S B A Excellence of Workforce Readiness Awards?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Reminders, March the 9th, Teacher Work Day, New School for Students. March the 14th, Parent-Teacher Conferences, elementary schools 4:15 to 6:30. March 15th, Parent-Teacher Conferences, middle schools 4:15 to 6:30. And on the 19th is our regular school board meeting. School board member remarks. Can we start with Mr. Johnson tonight, and we'll circle around from there?
I just want to thank this time, this is going to involve Principal Lacks at Bluestone Middle School. Sure she knows what I'm talking about, about the flag. I was confronted at the country store here a few weeks ago by an old veteran, and he advised me that the flag at Bluestone Middle School, because it had no light shine on at night. And that means a lot to me. So, I saw Miss Lacks a few days later, and I advised her, I said, just check on the light, make sure that it's working, because that does mean a lot. I'm a red-blooded American, and I believe in that flag. And I saw her a few days later, or a week, I can't remember, but I'd like to hear just the saying and just tell what, what the J R O T C, what you did to restrain those, you're just friends with the short. She went above and beyond just fixing the light.
Yeah, both of you stand up. (laughing).
I do thank Mr. Johnson for bringing it to our attention, but we were very fortunate that in the process of looking at our flags, we realized that they needed to be replaced. And in conjunction with the Air Force Junior ROTC program at the high schools, Major Hoffman has been coming in and working with our middle school eighth graders who were interested in joining the program at the high school, and so, we were able to take those flags and pass them along to Major Hoffman so that she could teach our eighth graders the proper way to dispose of the American and Virginia State flag. So, thank you again, Mr. Johnson, for that.
I appreciate that. Went above and beyond. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the staff at Chase City Elementary. It was so heartwarming to see the staff there who had had a very long day and continued to stay on their feet for another three hours after school to pass out food, and it was just a testament to how much they care about their community. And I thank those employees. And, and also, if you would like to go through your bookshelves at home, and if you don't have any small kids in your house anymore, and you have books that they, that are gently used, bring them here, or bring them to your school that you work at, and we will get them to the next Feed More event, because that was one of the things the kids really were excited about, was to get a book. Imagine that. So, we'd like to do that. And also, wanted to just remind you of Dr. Seuss's birthday, March 2nd. If you can go to elementary school and read to a class, I'm sure they'd love to have you as a guest. And one other initiative that we are going to try to get going in our primary care offices in Mecklenburg County is now that we have VCU in our county with our hospital, they are already participants in the Reach Out and Read program, and so, we are going to try to partner with their existing program so that every time a child goes to their Well Baby visit to get their shots that they love so much, that they'll also get a book, and they will be explained the virtues of reading to their child and getting them prepared for school. And so, it's a national program. It's typically funded with grant money from large corporations, and VCU's already secured some of those monies. So, we're now looking into if Mecklenburg can partner along with Reach Out and Read in our primary care offices. So, maybe VCU Health at Tanglewood might be the, but the pilot project, and we're also going to partner with the birthing center at the hospital so that every new mother who gets, you know, a package upon delivery of her child will also get books to take home as well. So, that's something that we're looking forward to. It's not in place yet, but we, Ms. Rogers, thank you for helping me get numbers together to get involved with that grant. So, thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Nothing, just time.
Mr. Palmer?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I, and Mr. Honeycutt had the opportunity to go at several of the schools to see the CTE program, so I just wanted to compliment the director, the teacher, and the students. The students presented the programs well. We walked around, we talked with them, we saw what they had in place, and again, congratulations on a well program, a program well put together, let's put it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes, I also wanted to say hats off to the CTE programs for the job well done. Unfortunately, I was unable to, because I had to work late, but I wasn't able to make it to Bluestone, but I heard it was a big success. I was able to make it to Parkview, but want to thank the students within the county who participated and made it such a great affair. Again, hats off to all of our sports that are going on right now. All of our teams, we're to be commended and be proud of our county, about all of our students who are participating in sports right now. They're making us proud. Believe it's a ballgame going on on both ends of the camp. Yeah, so, but anyways.
I'm glad they're doing well.
And also, in moving forward, I just implore our county to, to reach out to your board members moving forward, building these new schools, reach out to your people who represent your constituencies, and let your voice be heard. If you're not happy, you're able to make a change. We've got another election coming up in two years. There is no longer any room for division in Mecklenburg County public schools. We've got great things happening, and we're excited. I know I'm excited to be a part of it, and I just want to thank our staff, our administrators, our superintendent, for all that they do to make Mecklenburg County public schools a success. I appreciate each and every one of you.
Ms. Garner?
I also attended the CTE programs at both schools and enjoyed them very much, so that little two-year-old that was having ball. But I also would like to thank everybody, every school, for all the little gifts that we got tonight, and I will thoroughly enjoy the candy that's not Weight Watchers. Thank you. Thank you for your service today.
All right, thank you. And I was fortunate enough to go to both of the CTE events, and I think Mr. Cypher's and his staff does a wonderful job. I sampled all the food, as I like to do, just for research purposes, and it was all excellent. There's a lot of exciting things going on at the schools. It's great to see. And I also appreciate the recognition we got tonight, but I do have the unfortunate final score of the Parkview basketball game. They lost to I C Norcom tonight. I have a big fan who's sitting there, well, he's very sad right now, but he just let me know.
The girls won, Mr. Ritchie.
The girls, good. So, he didn't go to the, he went to the boys' game, but he just let me know that they lost.
Congratulations to the girls.
Who did the girls play? I can't remember now.
I don't know how to pronounce that.
Is it Pecoson or?
Phoebus.
Phoebus, oh yeah, Phoebus. Oh, they beat Phoebus, good.
They beat Phoebus, 43 to 32.
Very good.
So, it looks like they will probably travel to Coke World on Wednesday.
Yeah, they play some pretty big schools. The boys lost to I C Norcom, who's a powerhouse, typical powerhouse, but they had a great year. I think the coaches did a good job, and we've come a long way from where we were last year in the basketball team, and I'm extremely proud of those young men, so. Any update from Bluestone? Is Dr. Carter? Yeah, I don't have anybody there. Well, hopefully we fair it better. I forget, they're playing Green, were they playing?
Randolph Henry.
Randolph Henry. Playing Randolph Henry. Okay, well, I think we're done, and if I can have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moves? Anybody, all of, okay, seconded, let's go. Enough.